Members. Members, good afternoon. We have a quorum. A call to order the special meeting of the Finance Committee. Starting from today, we'll hold a total of twenty-one sessions of special meetings over five days to examine the estimates of expenditure in two thousand and twenty-five to twenty-six. The purpose of the examination is to ensure that the administration is seeking a provision no more than necessary for the execution of the policies of the government. Before each session begins, I will ask the Directors of Bureau to give a brief introduction. Afterwards, members can ask questions. A total of three thousand and eight hundred written questions were received, and the administration has provided written replies to these questions. And the administration undertook that they will provide reply to the first three thousand three hundred questions to the to three thousand three hundred questions in compliance with the rules of procedure. I'd like to remind members that all the questions must be directly related to the estimates. Before members ask questions, please quote the top right-hand corner reply serial number. And please send the written questions to the secretary before seven P M. Today. If you cannot ask the relevant follow-up questions in this meeting, the form has been sent to the sent to members through email on the first of April, two thousand and twenty-five. And I will, I mean, the administration will try their level best to reply by the thirtieth of April. We have invited officials to join our first session. Members who would like to speak, please press the button to request to speak. With us today are Mr. Jack Chan, the Ambassador, Ms. Dora, Vice Secretary General from the Legale Secretariat, Mr. Danny Wu, Commissioner from the I C A C, as well as other officials. We have a total of thirteen officials, thirteen members who have pressed the button to request to speak. Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Michael Ting, Mr. Benson Look, Dr. Tichy Yun, Professor Chow Man Kong, Mr. Ma Feng Kwong, Mr. Tong Lee Te, Ms. Carmen Khan, Mr. Emin Wong, Mr. Bill Tang, Mr. Brave Chan, Professor Priscilla Leng, and Mr. Yim Kong. Dr. Johnny Ng, regarding had twenty-four, the Audit Commission, two hundred and thirteen million dollars. Will Dr. Johnny Ng please state the reply serial number? It should be A U D for the Audit Commission. Well, actually, my question is a general one. I'd like to ask about manpower that is about one hundred and eighty and the estimate about two hundred and thirteen million dollars. This is a very heavy workload. Only three million additional expenditure estimate for the manpower. Is this efficient for the Audit Commission? Any technologies such as A I has been deployed, has been employed to help the government to enhance its efficiency? Mr. Lam. Professionals in Lam. Thank you. We need to save as much as possible. We need to save one Sanggu San whenever we can. This has been the principle we go by. We strive to do our best. We estimate that we have sufficient manpower in the past few years. Apart from the usual workload, we also take part in the United Nations auditing. I believe we will have more manpower when our country is going to withdraw from the U N Audit Commission. In relation to the use of technologies, yes, we're doing so. And we are using the A I system devised by the government. In relation to security and privacy concerns, yes, indeed, there are such concerns, but we'll do our best. Whenever possible, we'll use A I to help us with the analyses. Some media outlets may be concerned when they know that we are using A I. But I'd like to say that, yes, we have started to use A I to analyze our previous reports. We aim to use A I in our auditing work or in our future auditing work. Thank you. Next, Mr. Michael Ting. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on C S O O two two. The rent is actually quite a large amount. It's a government property that has been planned for redevelopment in two thousand and twenty-eight. So, if we can accept, there will be changes to the project. There will be public funds of two point two million dollars on renovation. It will go down the drain. It will be wasted. So why don't you actually look for another location? So why don't you, why don't you use the Kennedy Road address which served three previous chief executives? We didn't know we would have so many chief executives that have retired or that have left office. I don't understand why we don't provide permanent C E residents. Well, I, I think that we need to, we need to review this arrangement which has been in place for twenty years. And I'd like to ask about C S O O two, O O two. I'd like to ask about the extent of increase. The increase is way above the average. Most departments below three percent. As the document shows, some have to do with personal wages. But in theory, this should apply to other departments as well. So I'd like to know why this department has a higher figure comparing with other departments. From the Emin Wang. Thank you. In relation to former C E residents, as we have already explained, we need to take into account location, transport, operational requirements, and so on. We need to make it convenient for the former chief executive to meet with different officials. We agree that we need to look for the best location. But the utilization rate of government property is actually on the high side. We have been identifying suitable sites through the G P A Government Property Agency. The Immigration Tower in Wan Chi is a suitable site. We understand this is a provisional arrangement. But we can make the best use of the Immigration Tower comparing with looking for private property. I believe this will help us reduce rent. Mr. Michael Ting also asked about whether we will review the arrangement. In other words, whether we will only provide accommodation and services to the previous three terms of the former C Es. At present, we have no plans to cut down on such resources. Mr. Choi. He's sitting at the back. Please switch on the mic for him. Thank you. The C E's office wants to make use of internal deployment to undertake more duties. In fact, the C E has been doing a lot to redeploy internal resources. But we appeal to members to understand the C E's office is after all a rather small office. The room for redeployment of internal resources is limited. Just now, Mr. Michael Ting mentioned wages. When a colleague becomes a non-pensionable C S from a C S, then we'll have to set aside some funds to do so. As we are a smaller department, we need to set aside extra budget. And this is different from a larger department where deployment of, of internal resources could be arranged. But rest assured, the C E's office will do our best to take on more duties through redeployment of internal resources. And we will go by the principle of fiscal prudence. And we will also move towards the goal of the C S B to cut down on the overall establishment. Well, any brief response? What about the future plans, Mr. Choi? Yes, thank you. We will follow the plan of the C S B to cut the establishment. Thank you. Next, Mr. Benson Look. I'd like to follow up on C S O O O two about the newborn baby bonus. So far, eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars have been dispersed under the newborn baby bonus scheme. In from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two, the trend is downward one. In two thousand and twenty-four, comparing with two thousand and twenty-three, there was an increase of three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine. There's a combination of measures. Some have to do with housing, and we have started to see results. The Chief Secretary for Administration earlier on said that he hoped such measures can help change the fertility culture in Hong Kong. In your reply, apart from the eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars, there is an additional administrative cost of about eight hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to know whether it only has to do with clerical work. Is publicity expenditure included in order to encourage a culture of fertility? I believe it takes time, and publicity also matters. Three decades ago, there was a guide on family planning. C two was already enough. But at present, it costs about four to six million dollars to raise a child. So it seems there's a lack of publicity efforts on family planning. So I'd like to know whether the cost of eight hundred thousand dollars already covers publicity education. So for the package of measures on newborn baby bonus, do we have any publicity measures? Thank you.
Director of Administration. Thank you, Chairman. As said in the reply, to implement the newborn baby bonus scheme, the government hired a small amount of clerical staff to deal with the paperwork, and there is also eight hundred thousand dollars of administrative cost. So these are expenditures required to process the applications. Let's see if my colleague has anything to implement, Ms. Lo. Ms. Ophelia Lo. Thank you, Chairman.
I thank the member for the questions. I also thank the member for the suggestions. On the newborn baby bonus scheme, there is a dedicated thematic webpage on which there is clear explanation on the scheme. There is also explanation about the application eligibility. We will see whether there is a need for us to launch a publicity campaign so that members of the public will know more about the scheme and the work of the government on encouraging childbearing. I think Mr. Look asked you about the money. Apart from launching publicity, will you look for additional resources? Individual government departments in implementing the work, the cost of the work is absorbed by the existing resources. As to whether we will launch a larger-scale publicity campaign, we will think about it. Chairman.
I think with an overall publicity campaign, it will make the scheme more effective. Thank you. Dr. Tichy Yun. Thank you. On the Chief Executive's Office, I have five questions. They include O O two, O O three, and O O two, O one. There are three new posts under the Chief Executive's Office. My first question is this. The Financial Secretary asked each government department to cut manpower. By two thousand and twenty-seven, ten thousand posts need to be deleted. Now that the Chief Executive's Office is going to create three new posts, is this in line with the F S Directive? Is the Chief Executive's Office leading by example? While the government is calling for government departments to delete posts, the C E office is creating new posts. Also, some people may question why new posts need to be created. According to your reply, there is a heavier workload. That's why you need new posts. Well, all government departments are facing a heavier workload. Is there a better explanation from the government to convince people that you need to create three posts also? Among the three new posts, two of them are time-limited. In the past, a lot of time-limited posts were extended. Can you tell us that there is a clear duration in terms of how long the posts will last for? Will the Administration Wang take the questions? All right, Mr. Kevin Choi.
I explained briefly about this just now. The C E office is a small department, and we have relatively few resources. With new workload, we do want to deal with the new workload with the existing resources. We ask for members' understanding. There are only about a hundred posts within the establishment of the C E office. For example, we want to focus on new media work recently, and we try to take up the workload with the existing manpower. It is only when absolutely necessary that we create time-limited posts to take up the new work. We are going to create two time-limited posts for three years. We'll see whether the time-limited posts need to be kept for such a long time. We'll try to make use of existing resources or other means to deal with all the workload. We need to support the Chief Executive under the new culture so that members of the public can learn about our policy work directly as well as our policy directions. We also want the public to understand the overall policy direction of the S A R government. We will continue to work with other government departments, including the Information Services Department, to see whether we can do better in terms of making use of our resources. Moving forward, as I said, the two new posts are time-limited. Before the post laps, we hope that all the work will be finished. Also, we will follow the instructions of the Civil Service Bureau in terms of reducing the civil service establishment by two percent. As mentioned, we only have about a hundred staff under the C E office, so there is relatively little room for us to reduce manpower, but we will continue to work hard in this regard. Chairman, I have a follow-up question. You said that you have little manpower. Have you thought about borrowing staff from other government departments for, say, two to three years, Mr. Choi? If possible, we will try to do so. However, as mentioned, there is a lack of manpower in other government departments as well, but we will look into this.
Dr. Chow Man Kong. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question I raised. C S O zero zero seven about C E P U. C U P U was resumed in year two thousand and twenty-two. It's been liaising with think tanks as well as other organizations in boosting governance efficiency. The revised estimate is one hundred and twenty million dollars, down ten percent compared to last year. This is mainly because some posts have to be filled, and also there are two new subsidy schemes, including the Public Policy Research Funding Scheme as well as the Strategic Research Funding Scheme. In terms of vacancies to be filled, what are the relevant ranks and grades involved? Hopefully, staff could be recruited soon to fill the vacancies. Also, in terms of the two research funding schemes, the provision is lower than expected. Is it because of a lower application number, or is it because of a more stringent vetting procedures? Also, on policy research, I see that last year there were twenty duty visits involving three hundred thousand dollars, down about fifty percent compared to last year. Last year, the money spent was about four hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, there will be the promulgation of the National Fifteenth Five-Year Plan. I want to know if you have any research plans to align the, the National Fifteen Five-Year Plan. Now, on establishment, researchers account for twenty-four percent of the overall manpower. Will you introduce new manpower to support, for example, civil think tanks so that you can launch research works about, for example, geopolitical tensions? Dr. Stephen Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Dr. Chow for his support on our work. I thank him as a member of the C E P U. His suggestions have been very valuable. On the original estimate as well as the revised estimate, the revised estimate see a drop of zero point five percent. As mentioned by Dr. Chow. In terms of recruitment as well as vetting of application on the research fund, well, because of various reasons, we granted a smaller amount of fund. The funding committee comprises of university professors as well as other scholars. And they look at the proposals submitted. They also stick to the vetting criteria as well as standards. The research has to meet a certain level of standards in, in terms of the academic elements. And also, they will have to align with the government policies. Therefore, we see fluctuation in terms of the number of applications approved. We will try to catch up with the number. Uh, but the revised estimates see a drop of zero point five percent compared to the original estimate. And the provision for duty visits has also seen a reduction. This has to be in line with our policy directions. There are some duty visits that are compulsory. However, we try to, through the use of technology as well as video conferencing, carry out researches. Mingland officials, think tank members, members of international chambers of commerce as well as international corporations. As mentioned in our annual report, we've had frequent connections and communications with them. Now, on the establishment, like Dr. Chow said, including contract staff, there are some fifty people. Excluding twenty administrative staff, we have about thirty staff that deal with research fund as well as interfacing. Like other government departments, we want to make use of existing manpower to deal with all the work instructed by the C E. If the C E P U saves too much money, it might affect its work efficiency. Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. C S O zero two zero and C E O zero zero three. Now, on combating hygiene black spots, according to the administration, six hundred and ninety-six hygiene black spots have seen improvement, and they can be removed from the list. Also, some twenty-four black spots have to be kept on the list. How does the government assess whether the black spots have seen continued improvement or improvement for two years? Do you gauge that by the level of older? Also, to keep the hygiene of private premises, of course, that's the owner's responsibility. According to the government, it will educate the owners. And also, if necessary, the Department of, uh, the F E H D will take actions. What kind of actions will the F E H D take? And also, are you going to seek compensation from these owners? Now, on C E O O O three dash one, two information officer posts will be created by the C E office. Oftentimes, C E are invited to take part in different events, and the media will be notified of that. Oftentimes, the I S D will send a team of officers to follow up on this. I want to know, between the information officers under the C E office as well as the officers from the I S D, will there be overlapping in terms of their duties? And how do, should we understand the differences between the two posts? And what will be the actual duties of the new information officers? Mrs. Millie Ng. On the point about hygiene black spots, what kind of standards are applied to assess whether the black spots should be removed from the list? My understanding is that the relevant government departments have been reviewing these black spots on the list, and they've been carrying out enforcement actions. And for black spots that have displayed continued improvement for two years, they can be removed from the list. As you know, some hygiene black spots As you know, some hygiene black spots might show fluctuating issues. If it is observed that there is improvement for two years' time, then the black spot could be removed from the list. In terms of how private premises will be dealt with, if there is persistent hygienic problems which cause public health issues in these private premises, the F E H D will first take actions. If the problem persists, then the F E H D may seek fines or penalties from the private owners. However, it really depends on the individual government departments on how these cases are handled.
Second part, Mister Kevin Choi. Thank you. I thank Mister Ma for the questions. Let me take these questions from the perspective of the C E office. In relation to media work, there are two director positions. One, Information Coordinator and Assistant Director of Information Services. They are mainly responsible for coordinating information work. The other worked on new media as well as preparing press releases. These two officers will create one more post which is responsible for media work. And this position is mainly responsible for internal work. The two officers I just now mentioned will be responsible for new media, preparing scripts, press releases, and traditional public relations work. Mister Ma's question is worth exploring. The C E's office is a rather small department. We need to work well with the I S D. The I S D has a wider portfolio. It is responsible for all different levels of the administration, covering from the chief executive level to other levels. It's responsible for coordinating the dissemination of of information and news. In public events, the I S D is involved, but as I mentioned, we are short of manpower. No officers can have a lot of overlapped work portfolios. So when the I S D can send officers to public events, we won't show up in these events. But of course, we need to work together. We want the I S D to work with us to continue to promote what the C E has done. And the C E's office or the C E himself will also steer any public publicity work that is undertaken by other departments. Mister Tony Te. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on C S O oh oh four and A U D oh oh one. First of all, in relation to C S O oh oh four, that is the traditional hygiene black spots. There's been a plunge in the number of such black spots. I'm glad to know this. However, has the administration set aside some resources to not only delist black spots, but also beautify some spots in the community? It could be money well spent. Has the administration considered doing so? Has it set aside some resources on beautifying the cityscape? In relation to A U D oh oh one, that is a question for the Audit Commission. As mentioned in the budget, the Audit Commission will organize seminars or workshops to help the higher echelon of the government to uphold the principle of fiscal prudence. We all care about public funds. Public money needs to be well spent. The Audit Commission says that there is no detail and it gives the public the impression that they do not want to do so. If you don't help public organizations with financial management, then it might take a long time for you to undertake auditing tasks. It might be difficult for you to do so as well. So I'd like to hear from the Audit Commission. Can Professor Nelson Lam tell us about the latest progress? Thank you. Let's hear from the Director of Admin.
Mrs. Ng. Thank you, Mister Te for your question about land um cityscaping work. We have a task force. We have a cityscape program. Say, at roundabouts, central dividers, planters, we will undertake beautification works. At three spots with a high level of footfall, we will also be putting in place cityscaping work and we will also be repaving the pavement of over forty sections in Hong Kong. In phases, we'll be putting in place minor improvement works for fifteen housing estates, say, improving the public space, leisure facilities, and so on. Well, can I ask for more detailed information, say, how much will be spent on what the director has said just now? In the coming financial year, how much will be spent? Can you give us more information? Mrs. Ng. Well, these tasks are going to be undertaken by different departments. I don't have information at hand. But I believe they will make use of existing resources. But I will go back to study the issue and give Mister Te a reply. Next question, Professor Nelson Lam. I thank Mister Te for the question. I'd like to talk about the shortfall. The Audit Commission wants to use latest cases to take public organizations and government departments through different principles. And we'd like to cover the report that we're going to publish at the end of this year. Well, at the end of this month. Just now, Doctor Johnny Ng talked about using technologies. These are suitable topics in the upcoming workshop. But the report hasn't been submitted to the council. It will at the end of this month. At this stage, I cannot disclose information right now. But I'd like to say we go into great details to see how we can save manpower and employ technologies as we will be able to disclose more information after April. But we'll have to wait until the Public Accounts Committee to finish the meetings, finish examining the reports. So the earliest is that we will be able to organize such workshops in the third quarter or in the fourth quarter of this year. If we are to organize workshops before July, we will affect the progress on the Public Accounts Committee. I appeal to members for their understanding. In relation to the workshops, we hope to employ technologies so that we can test participants on the spot. We can see whether they have a good understanding of the case studies that we will be sharing with them. We are still planning these activities. And I believe the level of technology required isn't so high. Regarding we will, regarding whether we will invite people from outside the government, well, no. All along, we don't rely on outsiders, those outside the government to help us with the workshops. They don't have they don't have a good enough understanding of the work we are doing. So we use our existing manpower to organize workshops. We don't rely on outsiders. Well, this is a very detailed reply. Thank you, Professor Lam. Seven more members would like to speak. Well, please try to manage your time. We have four minutes. Mister Common Time. A U D oh oh seven, oh oh four, and O M B oh oh one. A U D oh oh seven, I thank Mister Te for asking this question. So I'd like to follow up on A U D oh oh four. In relation to the value for money audits, the guidelines were tabled in nineteen ninety-eight. In relation to economy efficiency and effectiveness, I believe we need to see whether they have a lot to do with livelihood of society. My question is that in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, there will be a reduction of expenditure. Every year, there are L C S D projects. Five hundred million dollars are spent on a project of the L C S D. Some people say that it's actually very difficult to to book a venue is even more difficult than hitting a jackpot. Another question is about bogus refugees. The issue has been plaguing us for a long time. Just last week, there was a motion debate on bogus refugees. The Court of First instance approved a total of two thousand two hundred cases or so. Did any of such cases use legal aid from the government? If you don't have information, you may provide supplementary information after the meeting. Thank you, Professor Lam. I thank member for asking the question. The Audit Commission has all along been conducting auditing work as per guidelines. And we can only work within the framework that sets out our power. At present, we have no plan, and that is my short answer to Miss Common Count's question. But we keep our mind open in relation to whether there would be further changes to the framework. Alright, next Mister Jack Chan. Ombudsman. A minor reduction of two point four million dollars in relation to our operating expenditure. We have streamlined manpower and enhanced efficiency. So we will be able to do more than what we could do in the past. A total of one hundred and twenty-three staff members in our establishment, but after I took office, the number dropped by five, totaling one hundred and eighteen. Most of these staff members are office assistants as well as clerical assistants. In relation to investigators, there isn't any reduction. For proactive investigation, we will undertake eight such investigations in this year. Last year, a total of one hundred and eighty-six recommendations. And this year, the figure will rise to two hundred and fifty-four in relation to proactive investigations. We make an average of ten point six, but now we have already been able to provide eighteen point five recommendations. That is about double the figure. And we made even thirty-one recommendations in relation to the housing departments investigation. So the reduction of manpower won't affect our work. Well, what about smart play? Can you tell us more about smart play? Well, we have received quite a lot of complaints and we are handling these complaints owing to misunderstandings. There were complaints. This is exactly why we are going to use mediation to solve the problems. When the L C S D does a better job in explaining the system to the public, then these matters won't arise. Thank you.
Mister Chong. Over the past five years, there have been sixty-one to eighty-six judicial review cases in relation to non-revlement claims. How about the money involved? For your information, judicial review cases over the past five financial years, the expenditure is about twenty-five million dollars to thirty-six million dollars. Mister Edmund Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question I asked. That's A U D oh oh six, a question for the Audit Commission. Just now, Mister Tony Che asked about the workshops to be organized by the Audit Commission. Now, I want to follow up on whether the workshops will target different areas. For example, financial control or financial management so that the participants can have a targeted training. If there is only one workshop to train different management staff, it might not be appropriate. My second question is this. Just now, Professor Lam said there will be some quizzes for participants of the workshop so that they know about the effectiveness of the workshop. This could be one of the K P I's. My question is this, for those who fail to pass the quizzes, will there be any punishment? We are worried that some government officers may not take the workshop very seriously. If that's the case, it may affect the level of effectiveness of the workshop. Professor Lam.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mister Edmund Wong for the follow up questions. First of all, we will target senior management staff for the workshop. This is we, because we want to improve the control environment. As to whether we will offer training to the more junior staff, it really depends on the feedback we get. We'll have to take into account the availability of resources. We have quite a number of public organizations as well as government departments. We'll have to make use of technology such as Zoom to carry out the workshops. On the quizzes, we will ask participants questions. We will collect their answers and we will take the answers into account as we carry out our risk management. For example, some public organizations may give very bad answers and we may carry out value for money audits in this regard. We hope that public organizations and government departments that are going to take part in the workshops will take that seriously. There are lots of matters in Hong Kong that we have to take very seriously. As to whether there will be punishment, even for government departments that have made serious mistakes, there have been no punishment mechanisms in place. Perhaps members can propose punishments. Mister Bill Tang. I have three quick questions. C S O zero zero four on hygiene black spots. In twenty twenty-two, there was first the list of hygiene black spots. It was a time when the district council wasn't functioning properly. Now that district councils have been functioning properly, I want to know whether the task force Now that district councils have been functioning properly, I want to know whether the task force led by the Deputy Chief Secretary for Administration. Will follow up on the black spots. Also, the government has spent three hundred, three mi- three hundred thousand dollars on the website. Does the website help combat hygiene black spots? My other question is C S O zero zero three, a question from Miss Maggie Chen. On the newborn baby bonus scheme, twenty thousand dollars have been dispersed to those eligible. The scheme has been running for about one point four years now. On average, each year we see an increase of thirty thousand newborn babies. Does this match your expectation? Public finances have been quite tight. I want to know if the government has plans to regularize the newborn baby bonus scheme. Lastly, a question for the Audit Commission. Some social organizations don't think they have to be audited. Is there a set of standards that the Audit Commission comply with in terms of deciding which organizations should be audited? First question for Mrs. Millie Um. On hygiene black spots, according to my understanding. There is a working group led by the Deputy Chief Secretary for Administration. However, a lot of government departments, for example F E H D as well as the H A D also take part in the landscaping work. Our work has garnered the support of a lot of district councillors. There has been lots of cooperation between the government and the district council as well as the public. I think that it is not enough to just have a high-level task force. What matters is. Education. We need all members of the public to abide by the law and to respect the environment. There could be. Better work done in terms of coordination. We may also need to amend the existing legislations. I believe the working group on environmental hygiene and cityscape will think about this. In terms of the newborn baby bonus scheme. We launched a raft of measures to encourage childbearing, and the newborn baby bonus scheme is just one of the measures. Of course, we want. As many newborn babies as possible. As mentioned. By the end of this year, that is two years after the launch of the scheme, we will review the scheme. We will review the effectiveness of the scheme to see whether there is a need for us to adjust the scheme. Well, I haven't seen one single meeting with so many questions for the Audit Commission. Professor Nelson Lam. Member asked a question about the use of public money. I thank all of you for your concerns about our work. According to the audit ordinance, the Audit Commission has the right to audit. Every single cent spent by the government. The. Audit Commission is empowered to audit different organizations. Also, if the organization, half of the income comes from public money, they can also be audited. According to the audit ordinance. The chief executive could also empower the Audit Commission to carry out auditing work. There is a reply on this in A U D zero zero two and zero zero four. Any subventant organizations, if they have received even a single penny from the government, they could be audited by us. As to whether they should be audited, it's up to us to make a decision. Mister Brave Chan. I would like to follow up on two questions. A U D zero zero one, a question from Mister Tony Che. As well as L C zero zero two from Mister Edward Leng. With tight public finances, we're all concerned about the work of the Audit Commission. The Audit Commission is concerned about the effectiveness and efficiency of the work of the government. The immigration department, for example, has been making use of technology. However, one automated car parking system cost some two point six billion dollars. Does this fall under your purview? Say one staff from the electrical secretariat may undertake a lot of work without an additional manpower. However, some facilities cost a lot of money, such as the car parking system I mentioned, as well as the smart lift of the electrical complex. Can these projects be audited? To avoid unnecessary spending? How can you help ensure that these facilities are cost-effective? Professor Lam. I thank Mister Chan for the questions. I have the power to look into these projects, but it doesn't mean that I will do so. For all the projects you've just mentioned, we have the right to audit those projects. It really depends on our five-year plan and the resources available. As we decide whether we should look into a certain project. Secretary General, do you have anything to say on the question about smart lift? When the smart lift was the first commissioned. It might not be able to fulfill the needs of all. Staff working in the electrical complex. After all, this is not a commercial building. However, after rounds of adjustments, including the introduction of new components and parts. As you know, there is an express mode. During meetings, and the lift will go to certain floors during the meetings. And we've been reviewing the performance of the lift, and we do think that there is room for the lift to. Improve its functions. We hope that the lift will be able to meet the needs of all staff working at the electrical complex. Chairman, the architectural services department, for example, is responsible for the lift. Will the Audit Commission? Review the departments responsible for the lift? Well, this is a just suggestion. Suggestion noted. Professor Priscilla Leng, I'd like to follow up on C S O zero one seven. I have a question for the C E P U. According to its reply. There are six research plans. As the C E P O carry out researchers? Well, I work for a university myself. I know that you give fundings to universities to carry out researchers. Will you consider engaging consultants, for example? On carrying out researchers on potential policies so that it can give you. Some very concise feedback on the potential policies to be implemented by the C E. And what is the ratio of such researchers compared to your regular research projects? My other question is for Professor Lam. I've asked this question before. The government carry out works projects such as Lentao Tomorrow. And we approved five hundred million dollars for the Lentao Tomorrow project. Back then, the administration told us that the consultant fees account for two percent of the expenditure. Please don't tell us the percentage. Say for the Lentao Tomorrow project, I want to know how much of the money we've approved is for the consultant? Do we have to spend so much money on the consultant? Two percent out of five hundred and fifty million dollars is a huge sum. So I do not just want a percentage, I want the exact figure. Does the Audit Commission have the figures? We often approve money and funding for the different types of works projects.
Doctor Steven Moong. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Professor Leng. Regarding public policies. As well as the funding for public policies. As we have re- we have already mentioned, they are academic and also scientific. And included in the reply is six areas. We accord priorities to these six areas, say the G B A. Nequal- inequality productive forces, integrated development of education, technology, and talents. As well as integrated development of culture, sports, and tourism. These are long-term development goals. On top of that, we also have short to medium-term goals. Salo altered economy. New industrialization. Shipping and so on. These are included in our work plan. We have already brought together a lot of experts. They will come together to look into these areas. They focus on these areas and they work with a team. Just now Professor Leng. Talked about short-term proposals or solutions. Apart from research funding. Some of our team members. Are responsible for looking into policies. And there are a handful of areas. Destinated by the Chief Executive. The C E asked us to look into different policy areas in different jurisdictions. Some of our team members are responsible for looking into this. If need be, we will undertake other consultancy studies. Think tanks, mainland officials, international organizations, similar in time to London. There are experts from the shipping industry, logical, C E P U. Ship Owners Association. Other chambers of commerce. We combine forces with these organizations. We work together with different experts to provide information for Chief Executive. Thank you, Professor Nelson Lam. I agree with Professor Leng. When we carry out value for money audits, we care not just about the expenditure of the works. But we also attach a lot of importance to the consultancy fee. We ask, we ask for breakdown of the fees. We also see whether the consultant. Has done what they have promised to do. Say the Timun Chakrabak link. We identify areas for improvement. We also identify areas in which the. The projects weren't completed to our satisfaction. Probably. In the future, technologies could replace consultants, but I promise members that we all continue to follow up on all these. Thank you, Mister Yum Kong. I'd like to ask about C E O zero zero one. It's about an additional three posts in the C E's office. I S T information shows two more information officers, and they are responsible for public relations, design, artwork, and so on. They are on N P S thirty four to forty four. About eighty two thousand dollars to one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And the um, they are comparable to senior information officer and principal information officer. And actually, in the private sector for comparable positions, it is very unlikely that they will earn. A salary at this level. Now we have a fiscal deficit. Is it possible to review the. Which level of such information officer positions? As A I technology has been employed to enhance government efficiency. The efficiency when it comes to clerical handling will also be enhanced. So do you have any overall goals in this regard? Is it possible to use A I to enhance work efficiency instead of engaging more staff members? Thank you. Mister Kevin Choi.
Thank you. Mister Yum Kong just now talked about using technologies or using. A more money-saving approach to handle our work. Yes, we support it as well, and we are considering. Something along this line. In my replies to other members, I already said that after all, the C E's office is a rather small. Department. We have done our very best to make use of internal resources to handle our work. But we have a heavier workload right now, so we do need more positions. Just now Mister Yum talked about the two information officers. And yes, we are mindful of that, and we didn't create any directory posts. At present, we are using the existing civil service establishment to redeploy officers. But when we fail to do so, we may. Engage officers that are non-civil servants. What Mister Yum mentioned is exactly what we are doing right now, say for drafting scripts or speeches. Clerical work, whenever we can employ A I or any new technology, we are more than willing to use these new technologies. But I hope members will understand, the C E's office handles quite a lot of confidential work. And we need to tread very cautiously when we use new technologies. We need to bear in mind the principle of confidentiality. I promise. That the C E's office will try our best to reduce resources. And we will also follow the principle of the government to save as much as possible and spend only when necessary. Last member in this session, Mister Dong Kong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about C S O zero one six and. O two six, well rather, O one O and O two six. Sixty one leading enterprises have been introduced to Hong Kong, eighty two percent from mainland, eighteen percent from Europe and the U S. The expenses per year are about fifty million dollars or so, accounting for some seven percent of the admin wang. accounting for some seven percent of the admin wing. In other words, the average cost is two-million dollars or so for introducing one leading enterprise into Hong Kong. So it seems from two-oh-two-two to two-oh-two-four, quite a lot have been spent on introducing a total of sixty-six enterprises into Hong Kong. Is it possible that we can enhance cost-effectiveness? It isn't very cheap. Some eighty-two percent of the companies are from mainland China. When Oasis was established, document shows it, it is responsible for introducing leading enterprises with the high potential from all over the world. So will you make any improvement in this regard? And I'd like to ask about the other question about mediation, that is C S O oh-two-seven. From twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, the ratio didn't increase in relation to the use of mediation in legal aid cases. Can the Legal Aid Department, L A D, tell us more about using mediation in legal aid cases? Yes, now I'd like to ask the official to respond to Mister Dong Kong. Among the sixty-six enterprises that have been introduced to Hong Kong, they will bring to Hong Kong forty-billion dollars and twelve-thousand-seven-hundred positions or jobs into Hong Kong. So cost-effectiveness is rather huge comparing with introducing other enterprises. When it comes to cost-effectiveness, we will keep reviewing the situation to see how we can further enhance efficiency while we are introducing enterprises into Hong Kong. And we will also be exploring other options or methods so that we can increase the ratio of enterprises from outside mainland China to Hong Kong. This is what Oasis wan- wants to see too, but in fact, with the current geopolitical landscape, when we introduce overseas enterprises into Hong Kong, we have actually done quite a lot on it. But the rate of success is on the low side. There are other factors at play which will, which will affect whether enterprises will come to Hong Kong in eventually. And we will work hard to introduce overseas enterprises to Hong Kong. You may probably notice when it comes to countries along the Belt and Road Initiative or Europe, the U S, Australia and New Zealand, there are quite many enterprises being, having been introduced into Hong Kong from these regions. We've done quite a lot on introducing strategic enterprises from these regions in the Hong Kong. But there are challenges, so the figures may not be as high. Second question, Mister Chong.
Yes, when it comes to legal aid cases, we will encourage the use of mediation in the handling of legal aid cases. At present, we distribute pamphlets or booklets to applicants of legal aid. In our certificates, we also provide information on mediation. We plan to enhance publicity in relation to mediation. We aim to provide more information on mediation to assistance seekers. We will also be establishing liaison with lawyers. We will encourage or urge lawyers to dispose of cases by way of mediation. We aim to enhance our efforts, so we are expecting an increase in the use of um mediation. Thank you for coming to this session. Our next session will start at three-twenty-five. This, this is the end of session one. Thank you.